Please, Mr. Ben.
Please, Mr. Ben.
And, welcome. Richard, please.
Thank you. Don't be bothered, just ask your blessing upon this council. We pray that they may work to the benefit of all rather than the benefit of you. And what Jesus is saying. Amen.
Amen. Richard. Mr. Ben, at the public meeting, these are all immediately before full council meeting, everyone. Skegness residents can ask questions or make short statements on any matter related to Skegness that is not on the councils agenda. The matters that are on the agenda, please wait for the public participation items in that part of the meeting. Please, please say your name and your street name. Thank you.
We just want to know what's happening next with the petitions that we've put through and everything else and the closure of the dementia property down North Parade and having to move all the dementia patients to new homes.
Okay, I don't think we've had any answers yet from the government, which is where we've been waiting for. We were told that it could probably take a few weeks and I know that Matt Norman was speaking today on the issue.
Yeah, I did see that, but it was just brushed aside.
Yeah, so he should get some answers and bring them back to us. Rodney, another couple of weeks, please.
Right.
Next question. Any other questions?
No. Did we get a target for the petitions, signature wise?
Council petition? Yeah, that's independent to the council.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we're just waiting on that. That was taken on by myself, supported by someone at the council. So, yeah, it's very quick, we put it out, it turns into vehicles, not a town.
Right.
So as soon as we hear something back from both the offices, as soon as we start recording, which was disturbing really hard, so as soon as we recorded, the council will stay here, we'll go on and all that, we'll have a rapport. And then hopefully use it as leverage somewhere along the way.
Can I therefore ask a question there? Tonight it's been released that East Lindsay is getting paid £3,500 for each one of these visitors to our town. Where does the money go?
I'm wondering too, but...
Do you not think you should find out? East Lindsay is getting £3,500 for each one of them. Where's the money going? Is it going into our doctors, dentists, medical? Where's it going?
Steve, do you have any trouble?
No, I've no idea where the money goes. I'm assuming it goes to support the local league and the outreach, it goes on to maybe £3,500 per person, you know, and that's, yeah, but I really don't know the answer to that.
But you're an East Lindsay councillor, why don't you know?
Because it's not my portfolio. Lots of things happen in East Lindsay that I know nothing about because I don't often. It's somebody else's job, so if that's that portfolio holder, they may be able to give you the answer because they will know.
Do you not think we should find out at Skegness where this money's going? They're in Skaggy. Why is East Lindsay getting the money and not the medical?
It's a very good time that you're late. If we haven't got the answers, we will try to find out. Mr. Ben, at the last meeting, everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Proposers, seconded, agreed. Thank you. Proposees, seconded, agreed, we adopted. All in favour? Thank you. Item two, to note apologies received to town mayor Friday's meeting.
And we had apologies from councillors, Joan Brooks, Tiva, S Paxton, Endamick, Si Nasi, and George Sackler.
Item three on the agenda, received declarations of interest. I'd be happy to show your papers. Thank you. Item four on the agenda, public participation. Any residents who have any questions?
Footballer, winter player, item number 11. This is from the Coronation Working Group. Pacing on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Royal British League, I'd like to thank the councillors for inviting us to see part. And it was a very, very constructive meeting and I hope that more organisations will get involved and a lot of businesses decided to sponsor the event to make a fantastic day. And I wish everybody all the best for this and we'll give our best to carry on and do what we can for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Item five on the agenda, town mayors, house meeting correspondents. Detailed our available on council website, Facebook, our Twitter. Item six on the agenda, schedule of payments for a room.
Yeah, apologies again for tonight's question via an email, but it was a short notice from a resident which, to be fair, I couldn't answer. And it was the payments, the payments for November was significantly higher than what you would pay. I couldn't answer the resident for why, and why it's so high.
The, at the last meeting, or certainly at the end, the local government pay award for 2022-23, applicable from the first date of the term, was awarded, approved by the employers' side and the unions and therefore the act paid was paid due this month, so that's why it's higher for this month.
So, actually, your question, can I defend me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we, can we have another answer?
Oh, okay.
Oh, right, sorry.
Sorry, I was going to put in that, but the Christmas tree grand opening, I believe, is September, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I did notice it was called some decorations, some lights and a banner. Was that all that grand opening? And if so, has that been available, possibly a bit of tree next year or will it be on later?
If the same amount of money is available, yes, I mean, it's among the favor actually, which, from that, from that bar, it's not going to be left.
So that's how it is.
If it can be reserved, I think that's, yeah, if the councillors gave it, they'd actually, but, uh...
Yeah, that's probably it, thank you.
Can we have a vote to accept this to these figures? Proposees, seconded. Thank you, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Item seven on the agenda, questions and comments from the leadership, please represent it. There are. Item eight, proposals and counterrepresentatives outside office.
Council, go ahead. I propose that we go to the minutes of the council.
You have a second over that, please. Thank you. Proposees, seconded, all in favour? Thank you. Item nine, proposals and district and county councillors.
Council, go ahead. Very quickly, just a message from the exclusive, and here's a £3,500 for asylum to care, and Tiva, you're going to get back to me if it is, I want to get spread on, so I can report back to you for a next council. Does it sound good?
Thank you. Thanks for asking. Item ten on the agenda, management and committee meetings, minutes of planning coming. Proposees, remove the planning content with this.
I propose that we adopt both management minutes as accurate and five minutes as accurate.
Thank you. Seconded, all in favour? Thank you. Item eleven, notes from the Coronation Working Group attached. And Skegness.
Steve, thank you very much. I also know that there was a further meeting in this working group, which I was writing to last night, which further furthered the arrangement. Thanks a lot on the excellent work of the VE days, I'd like to step in him off. But one thing is that urgency, I understand, is the union needs to submit an event notice to Elsa. I understand that you've agreed to do that, Steve.
In terms of the Coronation Working Group?
Have you now?
I've seen literally what is in this paper.
Well, that's fantastic, well. Would you mind, have you agreed to do the Elsa paperwork, have you not?
I haven't. I didn't even know that it was going to be with them.
Council, come in, gentlemen. At the end of the morning, we said that the working group set out and used the initial agendas to do whatever the council working group decided and the paperwork would be done by members. So, as far as I'm aware, that's what the motion said, that the office would do the paperwork. So, if this means that it is a motion notice, that's part of the paperwork and that was clear within the motion from those through.
What I'm saying is that I haven't had the information relating to what that is, what will be required, or any of the other details that are normally worked out in that working group. You can't say, you can't actually do that notification without all of the information being available and that is what the working group was, if it's going to hold an event, we need to do it.
Yeah, to be honest with you, Richard, there was a mention of an event at the initial meeting.
That was to be discussed when we invited you for the...
Exactly, that meeting was the other day.
Which was only last night, yes, and it discussed that we would, there was a lot of discussion and we actually sat there last night at that meeting, so we couldn't bring anything to the night at the very early, which last night we discussed that there were a few more things we would like to do and that we were looking to do an event. But we don't know, it's actually not yet, but we're not that far, but people have asked for different things.
Have you, have you got any recording of what was said last night's meeting?
Yes, they, not on paper order, but we were notified and, yeah, I've got a very good number. And there was a big meeting as well, so, yeah, we've got, they have good minutes of what's...
Right, okay, well, that means writing out and then being sent in, so we can look at it and resolve the problems that you created by calling for an event before we've been discussing.
Well, this is what's just been said tonight, there's going to be an event and we need to get a notice in, I mean, in the day, we would have time, you know.
Just, just to clarify, what needs to happen is that needs to come, that those details of that then need to come to council, council needs to approve it. When you approve it and will be associated with detail, then, as I'm an officer, I can then submit the event notice, but I can't do it before council has approved it.
Council, go ahead.
Yes, just regarding the notification, I've been involved in a couple. If you're going to put out about notification, as far as I'm aware, the full details aren't required within, as long as you're saying you're in, have an event, the basic outlines that we're going to have within the notification, because then you're changing throughout, there's no way it'll ask for a full details of the event because it's undecided until the day. So, as far as I'm aware, there's nothing to offer. If we was to vote tonight to put an event notification, we can withdraw that at any stage, so if there is no event, then we can withdraw that notification. If you don't put that in, then we're going to lose the timeframe to actually have an event, if we plan to. So, the point of meaning last night was bring it tonight, that if we can outline something last night, bearing in mind, I think, four weeks ago, was it, when the inspirational date was announced, which means we can't really, we would struggle timewise to get to this point where everybody was available and not that we unfortunately turned up last night, but they're willing to carry on with it. So, as much as I know, obviously, I appreciate what you're saying is, as much as what you're saying is sound is great, I think if we don't do something, then nothing is going to happen. So, I think if we can get a protection in support of events that happen, we just operate towards the event management, uh, of argument.
And what, what date is it then? When, you know, where is it going to be? What type of the event is it going to be? All of those things, at least, you might not have the detail at this point, but at least those principles need to have been established so that council can say, yes, agreed principle, move forward with that. The call that was there?
Council, speak first.
Yeah, can you just remind me what's the protocol to move a motion forward to council without notice? I haven't got my regulations in front of me and I'm not sure that I can.
Something like that would be on notice normally.
No, but what are, what are the rules and regulations about moving a motion without notice?
We can't only with a certain, certain items, so you can set up a committee, you can appoint a committee, you can receive a report, you can receive a recommendation from a, from myself or from an established committee, this is the working group. So normally there would be a document that comes, is on the agenda, the council will prove.
Council, go ahead.
Can we not agree tonight and then if we were to come back to you tomorrow with something, just to put a notification in, then we can build on that and what if we cancel and do the planning and agree everything as we go along, as long as we get a notification? Could we not agree to do that tonight based on the grounds that everything, all the paperwork is satisfactory, can't agree? At least that way we're stopped at the border, if we can bring back a, an outline event to you tomorrow.
Can I ask what the urgency for the notification is?
I believe it's a time requirement on the notification.
When is the plan planned?
To get it fixed.
Six to eight?
Six to eight.
This could be planned for a notification in evening after the council in January?
Yeah. Council, Richard, come in, gentlemen.
No, I didn't answer that because it was, the event wanted to be June or July, on the first wrote motion, after we submit the motion, the motion, then they actually give them that it was going to be the sixth to ninth. At least if you're just timing, we don't have the venue yet, we don't know what the event is going to be. It's going to be a town, it's going to finish with the residents of Skegness, we've got a few ideas, but definitely needs thrashing around a little more, there needs to be a bit more clarity on who can do what, what's available, how it's available, costings, etc. So, we're just trying to work this out so we can maybe hardly be able to do something for the day.
My suggestion would be bringing back all of that detail for January, council, there will still be time to submit the notification and refine that into the working event, event plan and then council can make a decision both on following motion, which it doesn't have at the moment in time. I would point out that if it's going to be, if you're thinking of the weekend of the coronation itself, council will not exist in that week, weekend, because the elections take place just before and on the day of the elections, all of you sit to be councillors and there won't be any new councillors until the following week when people can sign their declarations, they can't take place earlier than Tuesday. So, it will be mid, mid to late the following week before councillors exist and council itself doesn't exist until the annual meeting, which will be on the, uh, 17th, I think, something like that, is the Wednesday that weekend.
Council, come in, gentlemen.
Yeah, that's right. The motion didn't say that the working group was being finished by the end of March, the office did the paperwork, the event would be on the sixth to ninth, so doing actually, doing actually neatly, council, is that to be done, so it's going down to whoever doing on the day, but there's no need for us to act as councillors, if there's something going on, people need to know, there's no need for us to act as councillors within the town that's just on that one day.
It doesn't necessarily have to be councillors on that day, but we have to, we'd have to plan, you're effectively volunteers on that day rather than councillors.
So, even though we're not councillors, we're still officers and if we delegate any powers to, to do the day work, then we're not, if we delegate any powers to do the day work, then it were, it doesn't really matter what happens, does it?
The, the key thing is that there has to be a responsible person on the day of the event.
So could we not put that down within the, in the, in that initial plan?
Well, we will have, that will have to be worked out.
Yeah, that's one, yeah, I'm sure we can.
Okay. So if you take that on board and you get back with, with some idea of the event, then we can move forward on that. Okay. Item twelve on the agenda, budget and free set, reported a penalty attached, the free car park charge has been final draft budget, ready for approval in January.
So I'm going to say a lot of this because it's in the report and in the figures, I would like to say, I would hope that after tonight, we would be in a position where the figures are firm, subject to the tax base, which we weren't known for from the 2nd or 23rd of December, I then usually incorporate those into the report, the January, the January meeting, so that you have the full of the information then that's associated with the project and free set. There are, the changes in this report tonight are those following last, the last meeting where I was asked to model some changes to the car park, and then incorporate that in the budget, so that's what I've done and the report sets out all of the issues associated with that.
Any questions?
Steve, very quickly, I have no issues with voting, I think, what, we need to take free car parking, as I thought, but we also need to realise if we're taking money off holidaymakers and not taking it from residents, can I speak to that? Can I ask directly from town park, because obviously the other two meetings, are we not making a facility for a capital program for next year? Because that, that bit gone by, I, I couldn't see a couple hundred, you can see, and there was a big stuff coming up with the, what's happening in town parks, et cetera, et cetera. I'm only saying, I apologise, but a limitation of you.
The capital program was discussed and the feeling from the meeting was that it wasn't possible to make a larger than previous year contribution to the capital program. It has been agreed that we do more preemptive and, and that we've approved it going through. The capital program then will have to be reworked based on the money that's available to it and, so if, if this is agreed, there is, I think, a £26,000 contribution into the capital program, which is the same as last year, but it will need to be re modeled based on that contribution.
Okay, any further questions? Council, drugs?
Yeah, just a couple of the, the car park, we do then have car park at the back of the desk, which needs to be reviewed to do for it as well, so we've got, now we've got to, just to make it more aware.
Sorry to take on that, council.
What, sorry, what's that? Sorry, the what's that, is anything, but, should we compile that another?
There's two, there's two on the screen on the ground, these are the car park.
Is that, is that popular, is that?
Yes.
One issue we have got, and I've put in the report, that because East Lindsay do need to impart this, what is the, the parking notice, I've phoned them and asked them what the process is and how long it could take, whether it's a cost, and that was a couple of weeks ago, I still haven't had a response, other than the officer I asked said that it has been passed on to the better of the person within East Lindsay, but I haven't had any contact back from that person.
Feel extremely busy at the moment, those having to move the new ones, we will get back to you later.
Okay. So, can we approve it? Council, go ahead.
Actually, Mr. Ben, the clerk has done right in advising this council about the additional risks with regards to the car parking, I absolutely, without going over the previous debates, that's always going to be on this side.
I absolutely, without going over the previous debates, that's always going to come this time. Um, there is a huge risk, in my opinion, that in April, when this car park increase may be implemented. There's a significant risk still about what happened, which would obviously put some pressure on, uh, budgets without a sign up in the future. There was that risk to note and also, uh, the clerk has briefed this council on numerous occasions, uh, this is, that last year was pretty busy, probably the year with regards to whether we should also, um, ask for this. I'm fully in support of it, don't take these comments as if I'm not supporting this, but there are significant risks that's going to be in place. Because if we are thirty grand down, which is, is a risk of that happening, then that means that we are literally going to have to put preset or buy an extra thirty grand next year in order to stay afloat, which obviously is not, not what we want to do. We want to spend today's money for today's people, essentially. So again, councillors need to be mindful that, that the budget figures are in, are subject to us getting this car park increase implemented in a reasonable amount of time. If it doesn't, then we're going to be in big problems financially.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes, Mr. I think that now towards push to get the, yeah, easily to change the, um, prices for the first five months. And also we've got half a million pounds in reserves, which is going to be probably forty thousand next year, which maybe you just set thirty thousand because considerable amount of money. And so is forty thousand. I think the car park is far too cheap and I think it needs to be equipped with a seat for a car park, taking that sort of money. It's an unused asset, I don't want to use.
Don't mean to. Squat your ass.
No, no.
Councilor Finley?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from all the councillors' thoughts. Um, we have a risk register for a reason and, and we do take risks. And I think if the council, if we go from a green to an amber to a red under the present climate, then, yeah, I agree, thank you, it is a risk. But with people looking at turning their ear on freezing to death and the poor hospital services and desperate people on our way, I think we as a council have a duty to take a risk. You know, whether it's a small risk or a major risk or are it? We have to take risks on behalf of our residents and I think what we're doing is taking, maybe taking a risk. But we have to do it because we've got to think of our residents. You get it?
Anybody else want to speak? So we need to.
I suppose we're certainly, yeah, pay the risk, we're in, pay the risk, so we're in. And also we need to push from January as we get the, uh, the car park in January.
Okay. Councilor Kent?
Can I ask a quick question to the clerk? That's all right. What price does he, does he have to risk register on the back of his budget? If it's two or three, show it on. I don't think it's a third, we thought you had a case. Also, what would happen on a proposal, I realise it's still the same, a proposal, but which risks do you want to be handling?
Will be, next month when the vote is all made through, council will need to revisit its business policy. Um, I've started work on looking at, um, what the end of the year position is like and to be in relation to the, uh, general reserve. And I've done the two tests that we have in our policy. One is that provided by the, um, joint, um, council group, which is a part now, um, at the SLTC. And they, they, they have a specific, um, test for reserves, which is absolute minimum. And then there's also, um, I've done a volatility test, which is also part of our, um, uh, risk management here in terms of reserves. And within that, the areas that I've raised is in our budget, the number of items we haven't located. So I've allowed five percent across the whole project with variation in some we have to put for the increases. Um, a vulnerability on the non-precept income. So as well as the car park, there is, um, other income which we know can bear a community year. So for example, this year, um, the cemetery income has been a little lower than it was last year. And it's unlikely to reach its budgeted level this year. So if that was to continue, then that would put further pressure on that. We've also got income, uh, other income, so from the kiosks we've been paid out. Um, again, there is a potential risk there that if someone, maybe somebody went and bussed or something like that, then it could take, you know, months to actually get to a position where those could be relaxed or, um, and then even provide. So there is there. There's then the standard, um, risks in relation to, um, staff, so lots of staff or something like that. That's one of the key, um, key risks that is shown again by now. And the last one is a cash flow risk on the Tower Goldens contract. Um, that we have to, we have to bear in mind that we will be contracting authority and therefore there are risks associated with that. So again, so that would give us, if you have to look that up, it gives you a figure of around about a hundred and sixty-one thousand pounds. Now, at the beginning of the year, reserves were sitting at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, that's the general reserve. Um, but this year, it's likely we may hit an, an overall overspend or overspending in conjunction with income not being as great as, um, we hoped. And then there's out of the general reserve, um, as it's split then, there's also the payment out for the capital reserve and figure that we put through last year. And then add back into that the six thousand pounds which the budget did, we increased the general reserve this time last year. So that gives us about a hundred and forty-five thousand pounds. So there's then ten thousand in this budget which would be added on, so I may say about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand compared with a risk of about a hundred and sixty-one. So we're about five, five or six thousand to drift. That's the risk effectively that council will take, um, if it decided to move forward. Yeah, unreserved risk, let's say.
Well, thank you very much for that, uh, detailed explanation from the other cabinet. I'm quite happy to second recommendations A and B of the support member.
Item seven here, to be, move on with. Item A, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Item thirteen on the agenda, notes of advocacy in Thorpe Park Report. This is just to be noted. Proposal. Secondly, thank you. Item fourteen, becoming councillor, report attached.
So best practice requires council to actually, um, try and ensure that it represents the the usual service. Of course, the figures in the report show the breakdown from census information compared with, um, our secrets of the council. And you can see there's been some discrepancies, particularly, um, representation from, uh, women, with a very hard representative, uh, council. Again, one of the things that this council does is to make sure that people are aware of how they can put themselves forward to be elected to be a councillor. And last, before the last election, uh, four years ago, we could do a, a couple of workshops, um, where it's basically people can come along and ask questions. So they find out what, a bit more about what the council does and they find out how they can put themselves forward. And they understand, get to understand also some of the constraints which, um, face a council. There is sometimes a conception that a council can do more than it can. So the proposal here is that we have three becoming, uh, councillor events. Um, two of those would be face to face. One of them would be, um, an online, uh, event and try and make sure that we're getting to everybody. Um, and that those would take place, um, early next year, um, in January, February.
Councilor Finley?
Yeah, I, uh, recommendations, the, uh, seats, provide sessions on how to attract people from underrepresented groups and for elections. And just saying, obviously we've scored colleges, universities at the moment, a lot of kids from Scotland have gone to university. So is there a way we can reach out and then if they're coming back? Because some of them are, a lot of people that go to university, they come up to earth roots and they come out of skate after with no opportunities at all. So this might give educated people, um, who, that struggling to find a way in life, are not assuming that there's someone thinking, is there a way we can approach schools, colleges, you know, senior levels? Because they are familiar with leaving and they have a lot of careers in life, whether they're seeking political careers or, or whatever. It's just an idea, an idea for us to think of that. Trying to get more into schools to encourage and play for these councillors.
Anybody else?
So it's, um, the report is asking to approve those events, because there will be sort of star climb buildings of them. As I say, it is very much on the, uh, agenda now nationally. Um, you'll see a few, a few of the, um, the information going out from the National Association for Councillors. Um, there's information going out and we would use some of that, we would read, then we will. So I think the infamous Jackie Wooner is involved in that, um, in promoting that. Um, so we're asking the, um, the council to approve the becoming councillor event. And we can certainly take on all any suggestions that people might have, um, not, you know, in terms of contacting and how to contact them. Perhaps make it easier for them to put themselves forward.
Can I have a proposal, please? Thank you. Can I have a second there? Thank you. All in favour, please show. Thank you. Item fifteen on the agenda, consultation on skaters, junior academy, provision policy. Councilor Kent?
Okay, good to know. Um, this is a D F E statutory requirement that every school, um, consults on their, their intake policy. Um, I personally can't see any difference to the briefing set of policies, um, if I'm being honest. Myself personally, I'm struggling to, to make the comments, um, against this consultation myself. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Oh, it's proposed that we accept. Accept the paperwork on this?
Speaker?
Yeah, we've noted that the Skidmore Junior Academy is having a consultation on submission policy running until we take cases to Jenny. People can make their own submissions on the website, it's given.
Okay, can I have a second of that, please? Thank you. All in favour, please show. Thank you. Item sixteen on the agenda, tree type two, vine, correlation report, verbal report.
Right, we've, um, we've been told that the, um, it has now been granted, there's, um, a number of trees, including Scots pines, Cecilate, peach, or the snorly lime, silver, bircher, hazel and holly. And there's footing to areas on, um, Vine Walk adjacent to, uh, Vine Walk Natural Hall, adjacent to John Road. Road, Wilfrid Road to Vine Hotel, Bulge, um, or Bulge of Vine Walk, where there's a field and Vine Hotel to, which are not right. So those are where the groups are. We've been given, this is Eastonsy's final piece of work and this fact finishes their, um, liability in relation to the, um, the asset transfer. And it will then be for us to, uh, maintain, continue to maintain the area. And we have been given the, uh, the details of how to manage these, these trees.
Councilor Brooks? I think all the ashtrays have been taken there.
Yes.
Is, is there any healthy ones left or are they all gone?
My understanding is that they've all gone. I mean, I'm not an expert on trees, but that's what we feel.
I'm sure I've got some of them topped out on the foundation wall. There's some very, very large stones, so I, probably not right about the ground state now, so maybe they'll leave a, 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 something like that.
Yes, there, there are some trunks that would have been left, which are, uh, for the environment, wildlife and the, uh, natural environment. But in terms of, um, being a danger to the public, that's.
Look at the reserves, I believe.
Okay, can I have a, those are the big sections, we've noticed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I propose that, just a, just a, just a, just a, just a, just a, just a part believe that Eastonsi have fulfilled their open desire for this entirety, so I propose to be there for.
Thank you. Second here?
As I mentioned, I'm not a tree expert, but as far as I can tell from the information that we've been given, that they have now completed the work that they undertook in the agreement.
Thank you. Can I have a proposal, Richard Shaw, can I have a second there for him, please? Counselor Brooks, thank you. All in favour? Thank you. Item seventeen on the agenda, jolly fisherman character, third report.
Right, this is just a report that we know the situation where we no longer have a volunteer to go in the costume, as council aware, there's a process to get volunteers, which involves them providing a certain amount of medical information so that for insurance purposes, we're not putting people at risk, we have certain medical conditions. So we have another moment and it's been very difficult over the last few years to actually get volunteers who wants to go in. We've had one or two that they tended to do it for a while and then stopped. So I don't know at this point in time when the jolly fisherman will be able to go out again.
We're really fortunate tonight to have the camera owners and the stand up of this. And I know we originally bought that into Jolly, but it is important for our governance, especially to a lot of people, some people find it, other people absolutely love it, adore it, so is it something we could put out for and then build that process towards having somebody that wants to commit to it? Is that something that's possible?
Absolutely. If you know anybody who is a bright heart, you know, you can't, you can't have anybody that's five and six foot, it would look a bit off.
Is it so?
So if he's five, five, around five eight, five nine, he's a perfect.
Is it something you would be able to talk to people, say, as well as that?
Yes.
With the help of a possible standard, isn't it promising?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, anybody who wants to come along, certainly give them training and our, our smoking, no problem at all.
As I said, they do need to complete a sort of short medical questionnaire to make sure they're not working somebody in a costume who's proficient at that risk.
And by the way, there is really a bit of an age group, nobody, around about fifty is, okay, what's a fifty year old? Older than that, we'd have a problem getting insurance from going out. So am I right?
It's more to do with their physical ability and that would be one of the things that comes out on the form that we put out, just asking about fitness, but also asks about certain medical conditions and whether they have those. The always reminder, the jolly fishermen, they're not alone with children and vulnerable people, so they don't need it.
Okay, so if that goes out, I mean, I'm quite happy to talk anyway. If you need assistance, we should volunteer. Counselor Satch?
Do you mind if you, Kim, Robert, Sam, do you mind? If that doesn't sound good. Thank you. If you remember this, I did pass a number, a letter for the jolly fisherman, who is eager to be in the jolly fisherman, he's shown a present, born very soon, he worked in his own, that's true, he's sure of it and he wanted to do it with you because it's not for us, he knows the town. I still want him to do it, he may not be, but I can, I can wish on it. Around on four occasions, not once, he wants to do it, and then I, and that's not the jolly fisherman, yeah.
Okay. Item thirteen. Item eighteen, the community interest, good thing I'm forward judge.
So the reasons on the agenda is that it's actually becoming a requirement for council to remind themselves that the collective special annual interest quarters are required and they do need to be kept up to date. And I'm aware that some aren't up to date and I haven't been able to get those updated. So it is again, remind you, it is a requirement, it's not something you can choose to do or not, it is a requirement to do that and they do need it to be up to date. So please everybody check, alter the form, check it against your interest, the name of change, you know, things like you move your house or you buy a new property or rent somewhere else, that changes it all, so we need to let this know.
Thank you. Sir Dennis, please, you're likely to receive a super question, are you there?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The forms, we can send you the form, the copies of the form down again, if you want to, just ask and we can receive them back that way.
Okay. Okay. Everybody able to hear that? Thank you. Good.
Yeah, sorry for making it clear what the motivation is, policy, other group policies, minor changes, slight movement of code and things of that sort of nature, so I'm happy to propose on block, which the council adopts all group policies. As amended.
Second here, all in favour of Richard Shaw? Thank you. Thank you very much for attending this evening.
You're putting money out for the jolly or what? Adrian, are you going to do it? Are you putting money out for the jolly or not? You can get it up on the post.